High School School Committee for Wednesday, August 11th, 2021. On June 16th, 2021, Governor Baker signed into law an act extending certain COVID-19 measures to doctrine during the state of emergency. This act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022, of the remote meeting provisions of this March 12th, 2020 Executive Law to suspend certain provisions of the meeting on per Governor Baker since that's issued. Public will not be allowed specifically access to this school committee meeting. This meeting will be conducted hybrid. Instructions to follow this meeting live, see the notice of meeting posted on whittier tech.org. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recently, one of our past members passed away, Nelson Burns. Give a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move the approval of June.
Just a minute, Mr. Tucker. A few more things.
Oh, more public comment, I'm sorry.
Public comment. Public comment can be emailed in advance of the 6:30 PM start time to lram@whittier.tech. MA.us. All comments will be recorded to the record and all attempts will be made to mention them while during the meeting. Any emails received during the meeting will be mentioned at the following meeting. At this time, I'd like to introduce our new member from Newburyport, Joe Haberman. Welcome aboard, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. The approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move the approval of June 9 minutes of the regular school committee meeting.
Second. We have a roll call vote. We also have three members that are joining us via Zoom. So we'll go through the roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Okay.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. True.
Yes.
Mr. Haberman.
Yes.
Sage is not here. Moving on, minutes of the special meeting. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving. Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Haberman.
Yes.
There will be no Treasury report this evening. We do have a vote on the student activity authorizations. We have a motion for that.
Move approval.
Second. Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Yes.
Moving on to whole business, the superintendent's evaluation. We had 10, it was 10 responses, 10 responses to that. In overall, it looks like the superintendent is doing an excellent job. Is there any discussion on that?
I would like to discuss.
Mr. Tucker.
I just want to affirm the fact that I think our superintendent has done an excellent job in these most trying times, and she's always had the students' best interests at heart, so I endorse her completely.
Yep, she certainly has the students' best interest. Here, here. We have a motion to approve.
So.
Second. Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Right.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Haberman. Yes.
Reports and communications, we have no student representative with us this month. So that he'll be back next month. Superintendent's report, Ms. Lynch.
Thank you for you for informational purposes. I have many new hires moving into this school year. As you know, last year, we basically tore apart our school, and this year it's about rebuilding it, making it better than were before. So you'll see many new hires. The first is a moderate disabilities instructor, a dental assisting instructor, hospitality instructor, a marketing instructor, a math, English, and science tutor, an automotive tech director, director of people personnel, teaching assistant, three teaching assistants, department head of guidance, both tech coordinator for evening school after dark and day programs, English instructor, two English instructors, and a visual arts instructor. You also have an update for the immunization records of our two nurses. We also have physicians for learning loss interventionists. The guidance team this year developed a curriculum, so the four guidance councils were paid to develop a curriculum for career plans. Advisory curriculum, two years ago, when we went into COVID, we realized that we really needed to spend more social emotional learning time with our students, so an advisory was developed last year, where we're continuing to improve that advisory, so those three teachers were paid a stipend to improve the advisory. The early college summer preparatory program program, evening school director, curriculum design facilitator, our fall coaches, which we're looking forward to getting out on that football field again, medical support for our summer program, assessment system trainers of our Power School program. We used to use a different type of program, but last year we switched over to Power School, and this will allow us to have all of our information in one area in Power School. Cluster chairs for next year, class club advisors for next year, co-op liaisons, an equity diversity and inclusion outreach coordinator, student learning loss intervention coordinator, ELL Title I program grant facilitators, our 2021 Summer Acceleration Academy in math and English, and that was from our Esser grant two, and also a resignation of a biology instructor. Tonight, as far as a budget update, we'll be providing transfers at the September meeting regarding last year's budget. MCAS update, there's no MCAS update at this time, however, Whittier had a successful MCAS summer camp for the month of July. I hope you've had time to review this year's strategic plan that focuses on learning loss due to last year's school schedule. We have also included objectives to address issues of equity, diversity, inclusion, our MSBA feasibility project, and the social emotional needs of our students. We'll be using some of the funds from our Esser grant to meet some of the objectives outlined in our strategic plan. I do need a vote on the strategic plan.
Make a motion to accept the strategic plan as presented.
Second.
To approve.
Any discussion, questions? Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Right.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yeah.
Mr. Haberman.
Yes.
Esser grant, we were able, we have received over 800,000 Esser two grant money this summer. We've been making an effort to use those funds to address learning loss of our students, technology support, student mental health, HVAC concerns, and PPE. There will be a learning loss acceleration coordinators in English, math, science, academic vocational curriculum work, after school tutoring, February and April vacation learning loss bootcamps. We won't be doing setups or anything in that, but, and aid in the guidance office to assist students transitioning back to school due to mental and physical health absences. There will also be an Esser grant three later on this fall. As many of you know, there are new regulations regarding vocational school admissions. We'll be reviewing our data regarding our student population, will be making some changes to our policy for next month's policy subcommittee meeting. I've been very involved in these discussions throughout the state, and I think we all want our policies to provide an opportunity for all of our students in our district. This summer, I was able to attend the MASs conference that had focus on equity, diversity, inclusion. There was wonderful opportunity to reflect and learn from my colleagues throughout the state. I also attended a women's leadership conference called Power Trip. This was an amazing opportunity to meet school leaders throughout our country. This was truly an amazing conference. The Whittier Tech admin spent half the day working on developing authentic leadership skills. We were able to do some team building activities and do well as a team and what opportunities we have to grow. The team also had a two-hour professional development workshop on our school district, with our school district attorney on the new Title IX regulations and the processes that need to be followed and implemented. The ministry strip team has been doing a book club on equity and diversity, so we've had some great discussions. Today, we had a webinar from Jesse regarding COVID testing here at the school. This will be a free to the district. This opportunity will allow us to keep our students here at the school if they are considered in close contact. So they will also be doing true COVID testing here in the building, as well as pool testing, which will be labeled something a little bit different, but it's an opportunity for us to make sure that our students here are safe. Today, Kara Cosmos led our first building school committee, our first building committee meeting. We voted to approve a selection of a committee for the owners' project manager applications. We also voted the authorization to post the bid for the new owners' project manager. As far as like next year, we're looking at a new normal. We'll be having round tables in the cafeteria and half of the gym with four students per table. We'll also be having some seating for those students who would like more room for social distancing while they eat lunch. As you know, there's been much discussion regarding the need to wear masks this school year. I reached out to our school physician, and he recommends masking this school year. The Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC recommend masking indoors K through 12 regardless of vaccine status. Before you tonight is the policy that MASc put out last night, and I recommend adopting that policy regarding universal masking. Are there any questions?
Maureen.
Yes.
Do we have any indication of how much money or percentage might come through the Esser three grant?
It's significant. We're going to put out a survey to address to our community and to all of our stakeholders to see what needs they feel that we need to address, but yes, we will be having an Esser three will be another significant grant.
Also, will we be dealing with EBCFA during the policy? Subcommittee time?
Is that the face coverings?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to have a vote on that tonight before school starts.
All right, so we'll bring it up during the subcommittee?
No, I guess I'm looking for a vote tonight for that.
Well, that's tonight. I'm talking tonight during my time during the subcommittee.
Okay.
You want to do now, or do you want to wait till the subcommittee reports? That's my question.
It's the will of the committee. We could do it now, but we could wait till later.
Still no.
Okay. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendations of the superintendent. We got the face coverage. It's not a mandate.
It's a policy from MASc.
MASc.
Second. Any more questions or further discussion, Mr. True?
I have a special question. In the policy, it says parents may not excuse by signing a waiver. I just wanted, if you could, if anyone could just clarify that, I didn't quite understand because the sentence before that said something else, so has anyone, does anyone have that in front of them?
It says a written notice from a physician is required for a requested exemption, requested. So it doesn't mean it's an automatic thing, but parents can't do that on their own, they have to get a physician's notice.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's, that's how I read it, and I wanted to make sure that I, just want to make sure I was agreeing with that. Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Labella.
Yeah, just to be clear, excuse me, it's also a list of reasons for exception, and that follows. Would you read on? So it's just not based on, I don't want my student to have to wear a mask.
No, there's a, there are a list of other things.
Right.
Yes. Is there anyone else, questions?
I had a question. Where this is dictated by the state, if the state lifts this, does the, does this have to go back before the committee, or is there contingency on it or something to that effect?
The last statement of the policy says this policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee.
Okay.
So we voted in and we voted out?
Correct.
Anyone else?
This, if I'm correct, this is in addition to what we already have to some extent as far as buses, is that right, Maureen?
Buses, it is required that students wear masks.
Right, so this is basically now it's inside.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
In addition to what we already have, what we've been following.
So this will be, basically, we'll be masking just like we did last year. Yes.
It's all school personnel, not just students.
Right. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody else, questions? Question. Okay, roll call vote for this. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Right.
Dr. Testaverde.
No.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mrs. True.
Yes.
Mr. Haberman.
Yes.
Pass. Do you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Ms. Lynch. Principal's report. Still got us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, rest of the school committee members, Superintendent Lynch. I have for you today the draft of the 2021-2022 handbook, student parent handbook. So really, like Superintendent Lynch said, the only major change in the handbook was the Title IX procedures, and it will be in the appendix if you look that up, and also that we did go through a training in our admin retreat, so we're all trained on that as well. So if there are any questions, I'm here to answer them. Chris.
Yes.
Following that vote, I think we need to make sure that that gets in the appendix to the student parent handbook on the vote we just took.
Yes, and it is, it already is in there, in the appendix in the back, and in other various areas, certain page numbers as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Chris, could you make a change to my name?
Yes.
It's two R's, not one R.
Okay.
In the school committee role.
So since, so you know, since a lot of formatting issues, and it's been changed so that what you have there, so I apologize for that.
That's all right.
Yep.
It's all right.
Nope, thank you. I'm just curious, how does this get distributed out to the students? So we are, pretty much, we've gone online with that, you know, back in the, in the day, we printed off just for, with our freshmen. Back in the day, we printed off for everybody.
Yeah.
And then, as we get further and further into the technology, geez, the COVID year last year, so that was a little crazy, but the year before that, we started with the online, with our handbook, so, and that's all sent out through our vehicle.
Yeah.
If anybody would like it printed, it's very simple to do that too as well. Mrs. True, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say, I found some typos, Mr. Leganis, and I will submit them to Ms. Lynch, and then you can take a look at them. They're just very, very simple typos.
Awesome, and I thank you for that as well, seven years and counting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the student handbook, approval of the student handbook.
Okay. Wait a second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Irving.
Right.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
This is true.
Yes.
Mr. Haberman.
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Leganis?
That's it, that's all I have for you today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Business manager, Ms. Cosmos, no report?
No report, I'll have plenty of experts.
Okay. That's a fresh. Thank you. Mr. Labella.
Yes, I have a question for business manager.
Okay.
Have we, is the athletic field and track completed?
As far as I know, they are. Mr. Harvey, I talked about that last week, they are completed.
So we will be getting a final report?
I will reach out to the architect to ask them to provide us with a final report, yes. Kind of got lost in the shuffle with everything last year.
So we'll know about the total expenditures and all that.
Oh, yeah, sure, we can do that. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. September, we have the annual agenda items, the school committee review of the school improvement plan, and the superintendent's update on goals. Subcommittee reports, executive, we have not met, and I don't believe there's a meeting required at this time. Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
We have not met, and I know we were planning on scheduling a September meeting. Do you want to do it prior to the?
I'd like to do it prior to the school year starting, because there's a few things I'd like to go over before the school year starts.
So you want to do it in September?
Yeah.
Before school starts?
August.
August, okay, August, what do you want to do in August?
It's 25th.
26th.
25th.
Oh, 25th, I can't do the 25th, I'm not even sure I could do the 26th. I could do it before that, 23rd or 24th.
Okay.
23rd's all right.
23rd?
Yeah, as long as it's not in the afternoon or 2 o'clock.
So it's orientation for new students from here at 6:00 to 7:30, 23rd to 24th. We could do the 23rd in the morning or the 24th.
I'm open all day, anytime, either day.
23rd in the morning's good for me.
Okay, let's do that.
I can do that as well.
Okay, so what are we saying, 10, 9:30?
10.
10's good.
10. Maureen's office?
Sure.
Oh, down here, okay.
Well, there's only a few of us.
10 o'clock on August 23rd.
23rd, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Plant operations, Mr. Tucker.
Well, I'm not sure where we are right now, is there a need for a plant operations committee meeting coming up?
There probably should be one at our next September school committee, if that works.
Okay.
Right before that.
Six o'clock?
Okay.
Okay, that'd be good.
Salary negotiations, Mr. Early.
Superintendent, do you need to have this before school starts meeting?
I do not.
We'll get back, we'll get back to you later.
Okay, thank you. Policy, Mr. Irving.
Yes, tonight we have the second reading, the final reading of policy BEDL, which is remote participation procedure, which some of us are under this evening, and this will be the final vote, so I would move that forward to the committee.
Second. All right, any discussion, questions?
Do you want us to, if we're participating remotely, is it fine to contact Lisa for that as opposed to, it says the chair, would you like us to just contact Lisa so she can set it up?
I think it's, technically, it says the chair, I'm not sure how others.
That's why I asked, that, yeah, that's why I'm asking, Brett, do you want, do you prefer us to contact Lisa as opposed to contact directly?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, we need to note that, just to make sure. Yeah, and I would, I would say, where possible, do both, just as a courtesy to the chair, but also have Lisa send out or make provision for Zoom. I think that way we're covered all the way around.
Okay, so both, then.
I would recommend as a courtesy to the chair that we at least notify him, maybe as a CC, you know, send something to Lisa with a CC to the chair, or vice versa.
That sounds good.
This way, both are notified, the Zoom takes place, and everything's nice and the way the state wants it.
Okay, so bright email, both by email, got it?
I would, just as a courtesy to.
Okay.
Good with that.
Keep in mind, too, that this, this is an important vote going forward, we've dealt with this several times, and I think this is important to deal with this now. Technically, under the state's ruling, we're good till April 1st of 2022, but for the future, I think this is important for the school committee to pass, so I would recommend highly that we pass this and go forward.
I concur.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Labella.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Dr. Testaverde.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Mr. Haberlin.
Yes.
Mr. Irving votes yes.
Oh, sorry.
I was sight out of mind.
That's it for the subcommittee.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm wondering, will we need a meeting, 15-minute meeting prior to the school committee in September?
You know, you know what, Mr. Irving, we're probably going to need a longer meeting than that. I'm wondering if we could meet at 5:30 before the school committee meeting.
Okay, because I know we have some things.
Yeah, we have some admissions. We're going to have to look at, have a draft of an admissions policy and some things like that. There's other MASs policies that have come through as well.
All right, so September 8th at 5:30?
Yes.
I have a question before we say yes to that. Could we possibly do it when we're here on the 23rd? And I mean, most of us are on the same, on the, on the two committees anyway.
I won't be prepared for that.
You won't be able to do that. Okay.
Sorry.
No, not a problem. So it's at, what did we come up with?
5:30.
5:30. Listening. Okay.
All right, that's it.